Really interesting. Yeah, really interesting how he considered the fold so heavily because people just under bluff and he's born at all tournaments. It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, I mean, what are his buffs? You know, like if we really think about it, like sure ace high, like ace high has some showdown value in that ace five. And when he raises the term with maybe some backdoor diamond draw or something like that and actually gets called in on this kind of board. Like what, what hands did you have if you're folding?
Um, and it's gonna have some withdraws and things too. So I think calling is the only option myself. Let's see if Boogaloo uh got away from it. Woo, call a six.
So this is close between call-
Really interesting. So call a six, raise a seventy-five hundred is ten points. And I'm gonna say he said that because this is a very bad player. And so he thinks the very bad player is gonna stack off here with horse queens a lot. I'm gonna guarantee that's what he's gonna say. Very interesting though. I thought call for sure was the right answer. I never am in this spot. I don't know. Um, interesting spot too. I, I, I think this is a little bit of a lesson for everyone out there too. A lot of times the hands we want to float with, like this one, are better as, as raised as you. So this is kind of falls back out of it.
Yeah, and he was kind of an echo chamber for us there saying, you know, we just get better hands to call and worse to fold. Like he's going to have some gut shots in his hand. He's going to have spades, he's going to have king X. And we kind of, I mean, we kind of identify kind of what cards are going to be bad for us on future streams. And we, we were aware how to proceed on those cards.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's a very good point, man. You're right, you're right, you're right. That was the best. He didn't say anything. You won. Just straight up, this is fun.
You won. I, I, I just, yeah. Alright, so, ooh, look at this. You're not opening this. He just looked at this.
Button cut off high deck low jack, under the gun one.
Come on now, okay? So, let's see if he-
He's gotta open it or there wouldn't be a hand.
You, yeah, it wouldn't be a quick-
I'm already down on points.
You're already down on points in real life. Now, obviously, you're gonna cheat, but-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna evolve.
You're gonna, yeah, you're gonna adapt, right?
Ah, just play it.
I'm going to cry if he says he's folding here. If he's like, "Yeah, you should be folding this in this kind of tournament," and you were actually right. Alright, cool.
Wah wah. Ah, yes! I just wanna say for the record, this is the best three-point score I've ever gotten in my life. Because the right answer was fold!
But you heard what he said. I'm not the table.
This is a three K.
Here comes the excuses. Ten points fold, it's right here.
The excuses to open. If your table is particularly tight and weak, welcome to the five-dollar two K world. I mean, you know, the eleven-dollar ten K, I'm opening this, yeah, for sure.
This is the best three points of my life!
Oh, that's hilarious. Hey, everybody's-
Nailed it. What the hell kind of play is that from King Queen? Who in their- Who does that?
Who the hell?
Jonathan Little's an absolute crusher, so it's nice to have him.
Yeah, I agree, and I always love playing right after sessions like this because I feel like my brain's warmed up. I'm thinking through things and, and so it's a good way to start a session for sure.
Alright, guys, this is it.
What's up, my- You wanna give a gist? He was saying Narco Power was playing about deep pipping about twenty-eight percent of hands. He had been very aggressive in this uh ten-dollar buy-in. And here are the options to fold, to call, to raise the twelve-hundred, raise the- What? Wait a minute, he made it eight-hundred, and my man's giving options to twelve with fourteen-hundred hands. So it's already getting kinda spicy.
That's so nasty. To be on a site with these other crushers, you know, well-known poker public figures is pretty exciting, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah, I didn't mention that when I was kind of giving a little intro here too, you know, Assassinato, Matt Affleck, John Little, uh, all coaches on the site. So very highly respectable, quality poker content.
Yep, Evan Jarvis as well, you know, remember Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Assassinato, John Little. Uh, so I guess that just makes sense. He could just have the ace of clubs in his hand. That's interesting though. I thought that was interesting.
I'm gonna point you out, you didn't do that bad. Forty-five.
I like how you just pat me on the back. You didn't do that bad. Well, yeah, good job, buddy.
The fact-
I agree with that. I got the higher score in the first one. I got the higher score in the first one, so, you know, we're one for one, buddy.
I just wanna know-
Calling, guys. Let's see if we're good. Similar situation. That's pre-flop? I think it's pre. Alright, guys, we're checking right there. Oh, fuck.
When you're facing a min raise or just a touch more than a min raise, and there's an anti-inplay, which is gonna be the case in most tournaments, I think, going forward, you want to defend pretty wide. If your opponent's making a two-
Alright, cool. Uh, you're going fourteen-hundred?
I'm going fourteen-hundred, guys.
I'll go call with the honest to that.
Alright, and-
I would fold in game though, for the record, in case I still were winning it.
Ah, you won. You win. I, 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 I have to concede. You win.
Fourteen K.
Fourteen K, let's do it.
No, now we can't win. This is a pretty rough spot because-
Damn it!
Mm-hmm. Where are you gonna get my chat?
Get my chat?
They like, they like naughty things. They like just beer, alcohol, you know.
Alright, let's do a- I can do a ten-dollar ACR giveaway.
A ten-dollar ACR giveaway courtesy of my man Toe. For me beating that ass heads up in this, sorry. We'll do this. We'll do, we'll have to do it at least once a week, man, and then, you know. We'll do it, we'll do it every week a couple times.
So, it's tied.
I guess we gotta give out ten bucks to each of each other's communities. We'll just do our own ten, ten-dollar free roll for each. Or is that, does that sound fair?
Yes. Do you know what this means?
You win. I give his chat ten bucks. Take it.
So that's cool because we have two ties, and then a win from you and a win from me. This is like the epic battle. It's perfect. It's great.
Yeah, we're, we're even stevens.
This is awesome. I love it.
You know who-
Stop. We got a giveaway going. Let's run the giveaway for the ten-dollar ACR winner. Closing the giveaway, drawing the winner, my man Sevz, we're getting the ten-dollar ACR giveaway for this one. What up? We are here, we all ready, we are live, we are sitting in the-
How's it going, boys? Let me make sure I got Toe unmuted. What's up, buddy? What's up, man? How you doing?
Good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just digging this new overlay. I'm starting to mess around with it a little bit. I didn't set up hotkeys for it or anything, but it looks sweet like this. I'm digging it, bro.
We got the new looks, it's all official-like, we're matching. Look at this.
Yeah. Now, we can, we can also mess around with it a little bit, season scores and whatnot, but what's up, everyone? Thanks for joining. We are back.
Back, ready to go.
I don't think it's gonna be a super long stream. Toe has to go win a ring today. And, uh, yeah, but either way, we are doing it. What's up, everyone?
Yeah, yeah, run it out here, get some learn on, get fresh, get ready, going to win a ring later at Planet Hollywood. Uh, gonna hang out with, uh, Matt Affleck should be there. Just GTO is a punk. I put it out there in public. He's gonna sleep in and play day one B tomorrow. But yeah, so, uh, the PC.com crew are hitting it hard today.
Yes, sir. But, um, yeah, man, you wanna get right into it. Good morning, everyone.
Uh, yeah, good morning, everyone. Before we get right into it, exclamation point PC in my chat, exclamation point PC in Six's chat. This is the PokerCoaching.com study stream we do every Saturday at noon Eastern. Uh, make sure you go to those links, sign up for free if you haven't done so already. You get twenty-five free quizzes, homeworks, push full charts. You get to be part of the cool crowd, all these great things. Um, so make sure you are getting as much of that good, quality, free content as you can. And if you wanna sign up for the premium, it's up for six-hundred-and-fifty quizzes and homeworks up the wazoo and all that good stuff. Coaches like Assassinato, coaches like my man Crazy Sixes, coaches like John Little, Evan Jarvis, Matt Affleck, Lexa Gavin, Trevor, I can't remember his last, Trevor Wade, and myself.
Tristan Wade, Tristan Wade. Yeah, just, yeah, so they're always adding content. I mean, you have enough content on this site to go from now to the end of time. Like, there's just so much, dude. Like, and they're always adding more. Every, every coach creates quizzes now. Um, so, man, there, just, um, a lot of opportunities to get better. I mean, I'm excited to be a part of it. Like, I always say, Mike Cash with the Bitties, "Good morning, my dude." Thank you, buddy. Um, but yeah, man, uh, also the webinars. They've been, we've been averaging like one or two a week, and they're high-level. They're very, they're awesome, man. I would say worth checking out as well, so-
Yeah, you get a chance to hang out with these coaches in real time, ask them real live questions, and get their answers on the spot for free. So you cannot miss out on that opportunity. It's just out there for you to take.
Yeah, sometimes they take, you know, hand histories from members of the community as well. So you may have an opportunity to get your, uh, your hand history reviewed by one of these guys. Um, so that's also a plus, so.
Yeah, I mean, shout out to IHOP's Matt, right? Like, he got lucky enough to get chosen, and, um, someone we actually know is getting reviewed by Trevor, right?
Tristan, but yeah.
Tristan, does he Tristan again? I purposely tried to correct myself, goddammit. I apologize. I apologize, Tristan.
Funny as hell. Uh, what's up, uh, GTO? Good morning, my dude. Um, but yeah, let's do it, baby.
So right away, I see one that I think is interesting.
Ooh.
One, it's Assassinato. Two, it's an America's Card Room quiz. And three, it's a five-dollar buy-in. Like, this is all of your nightmare.
A five-dollar on America's Card Room, twenty-five fifty, it's early stages. We have to, we just have to look at this, right?
This hits everybody. This hits our whole-
Yeah, this hits everyone, so ACR for sure, so. Alright, let's take a look. Hopefully, it's not one of us in the hand history, the labeled official or something like that, so you never know.
This quiz works. Right now, it looks broken.
Oh, no, so let's see.
Is it me?
What? Yeah, it's just like six numbers at the bottom, and it's not working. Alrighty then, yeah.
They're taking a page out of ACR's book, and it's down right now.
That was good. The quiz, the ACR quiz would be the one that crashed.
Alright, cool. So, I guess that puts out. Uh, alright, well, I guess pick a different one. Fuck.
Alright, yeah, I'll, I'll buy one. I mean, you know, I'm always gonna choose the twenty-five K and stuff like that, just because, uh, I could just dream, yeah, I just daydream about playing this shit. So, yeah, let's, uh, we took a look at, uh, twenty-five K last week as well that he played. So let's check out this hand as well. Jack eight offsuit. I'm gonna click it and let's take a look, man. Oh, shit, hold on. Oh, no.
Problems. From early position and a call from the hijack. Should we fold, call, re-raise to thirty-six-hundred, or re-raise to six-thousand?
Yeah, I'm gonna play it again, guys, because that was low, I'm sure.
Just let me know when you're ready. Alright, hey, well-
One second, bud.
Uh, Seminole Hard Rock Poker Open is the S-H-R-P-O Wisco. Uh, Marlon, good morning, what's up? Joe, what's up? How you? Hold nuts, what's up?
Alright, I'm ready. Is that better, guys?
Cyrus, what's up?
Hopefully, that's better.
Yup, yup.
Alright, cool. Yeah, this is gonna be a pretty standard defend. I, the other option just looked wild as hell to me with Jack eight offsuit. No matter how these guys are playing, we probably just don't have this in our squeeze range. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna say this is a pretty straightforward, just defend here. Anyone doing anything else?
I gotta have the calls, and, uh, yeah, I'd kind of agree. Like, raising here seems a little suicidal. Folding for one blind seems like bad math. So that only leaves call.
Dude, I mean, there are a range of hands, like, we do need to fold here, that, we don't play a hundred percent here. I think we would probably defend seventy percent.
And oddly, I would fold like king four offsuit here.
Yes.
And even though that's technically a better hand, the problem there is like, when you hit a king, you're likely gonna have kicker problems. And then if you get a four, it's never gonna hold up, right? So-
Yeah, exactly.
This hand plays better than that. It straights.
Agreed. So, yeah, we're all calling. There should be no debate here. I mean, unless, nah, just, just no debate.
Nope, I don't see any debate. Let's look up.
Let's do it.
This is a very nice spot to call. We're getting amazing pot odds. Our hand is, you know, marginal, but certainly good enough. When you are playing very deep stacked, as we are playing a hundred-something big blinds deep, you have to be a little bit cautious whenever you do make a hand like top-
Scrappy. Thanks, buddy.
Clearly are not loving it then. That said, this is a spot where it is certainly fine to call. If you are gonna re-raise as a bluff, which you should essentially never do, but if you do make a re-raise, you wanna make it six-thousand, making it thirty-six-hundred is gonna result in you getting called by both players due to their amazing odds and their position. So if you are gonna re-raise, do not use a tiny size.
Right.
Flop comes. Jack, I'm sorry, Jack eight, ha, eight-eight-two. And, you know, you may think we should lead here, but I really dislike leading because leading pretty much turns all the opponent's ranges into bluff catchers right off the bat. And you don't want to do that. You would much rather check, let them bet, and then go from there. That way, they're not thinking, ugh, you know, I have a hand like pocket aces, and the guy just led onto me and led, led into me on eight-eight-two. Now, um, you know, what do we do? So anyway, I check, under the gun bets, under the gun plus one bet sixteen-hundred, hijack raises to four-thousand. Should we fold, call, re-raise to twelve-thousand, or go all-in?
Interesting. What up, Scrappy? Thank you for that T1, buddy. Really appreciate it. Good morning, my dude. Let's get our learn on today.
Yup, 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 yup. Um, cool, so... This is an interesting spot.
I mean, I, yeah, I think, yeah, when I, when I view this spot, let's see, let's see what people in chat say first. I wanna see what chat says, because I always love jumping right-
Said, "Set the trap."
Fighting at is an exploit, but will, but he will be re-raising to twelve K. So you think exploitatively, we call here to keep our range, I mean, how wide is our range in this? But I guess if we flatted a hands like pocket sevens, pocket sixes in a big blind, uh, nines that just decided to not raise our hands like that, ace deuce of spades, would we just ever call this action? I guess some of those hands would just call the four K. Um, so maybe our range looks wider when we call, but when we raise to twelve K, like, do we ever have anything else but an eight?
I, so here's where I'm conflicted.
I'm very conflicted with this one as well.
In the stakes that I frequent, which is like two fifteen and under, everything in my head screams, "Bet the nuts! Bet the nuts!" The problem is that this is a twenty-five K, and so I think in a twenty-five K, is this guy still gonna stack off here with aces?
You think he flatted aces behind? He can have better eight X. Man, he's the, he's the, he is, uh-
I'm not really concerned about better X.
The overcall.
I'm wondering if there's an overpair out there that can, that can stack off here, in which case I'm gonna go twelve.
I'd say almost no. I mean, we might get another street, because when we call here, we might go check, check on turns, then we go three-way. Nah.
Yeah, so that's my problem. I think when we call here, nobody puts another chip in this damn pot.
Right.
We check, it's gonna check through, and then we just lead river? Like, what are we leading river into two players with that isn't a main?
When we check raise to twelve K, we literally only have an eight or dices. We have nothing else, so we're gonna lose value. I just think our range stays wider when we call, because we would call here in a big blind with some middling and smaller pairs. So we may invoke future bets, you know, moving forward. So I'd probably just call here. Um, making it twelve K just looks obscenely nutty.
I got a bunch of flats in here. Uh, King Deuce says, "Re-raise this only ninety plus, and Deuce beat us." Uh, he has horse eight, it's easy to maybe, but it's probably a bunch of big overpairs. I mean, I ain't gonna lie, in-game, I am going to raise this, and I'm gonna go twelve to fourteen K.
Uh, yeah.
That's what I'm gonna do all day, every day.
Because you know why-
Today, Planet Hollywood, that's what I'm gonna do, that's what I did yesterday, like, that's what I'm gonna do.
Because under the gun here theoretically, I mean, he's gonna use a small sizing, right, with aces? He's gonna use a small sizing with kings and queens.
He has all the overpairs.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he's still-
The question is, is can he get away from them?
I don't think he gets away for just one bet.
What are you doing at a twenty-five K with aces and this action?
I would hope I would have the discipline to fold if it goes raise, three-bet, and a blind who has every single eight X in their range.
Sucks so bad, right?
Makes it twelve, like, the blind has every single eight X in their range, and pocket deuce is like, what the fuck am I gonna do with one pair of aces? Call once, and then fold to future action always? Like, it just sucks.
All overpairs of-
What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do with aces in his spot? What are you gonna do?
I'm gonna fuck freak out. Because I'm playing my first twenty-five K, and I'm basing this action with aces.
Yeah, yeah.
Why in a twenty-five K do I have to be basic? Because if I'm playing the twenty-five K, it's definitely my first one.
Yeah.
So, yeah, uh, fuck, I would, I guess I would fold in a twenty-five K with aces, thinking that's pretty strong.
Yeah, this is pretty brutal, though.
Fuck, I like the bet the nuts. Everyone in my chat's calling, except for me and King Deuces.
So you're making it twelve, and everybody else is calling?
So I guess we're gonna go call, because everyone says call, and I can see that.
Yeah, I feel a call as well. Alright, uh, we're gonna try calling here.
I just said I was folding aces, right? So I guess that's not good, right? I just, fuck.
Yeah, somebody knows, some comments in the chat, raising says-
King Deuces reminded me from last week. Jonathan said this was a soft twenty-five K, so that makes me wanna raise it.
Oh, yeah, right. He did say that last week. This is the same twenty-five K. He's like, this is a soft twenty-five K, like, whoa.
Uh, I'll go twelve K, but, uh, looks like we're three and four in my chat. Call versus raise.
Alright, well, we got all calls in mind, I think. Weird spot, because anything we do screams eight. I think our range stays wider when we call. Uh, but raising, you know, may stack, not stack, but get more value from aces, kings, and things like that.
Do we still have nines, tens, and jacks? Because that's basically all we have. Maybe sevens. If we, if it goes bet, raise, call, do we still have those hands? Or do we fold all those hands pre? So I was saying, like, we flat here, does, we're kind of in those, one of, one of those weird spots where we're kind of damned if we do and damned if we don't, it looks like it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would say we would flat here with, uh, four, you know, I mean, anything under, pairs under nines. Maybe we just turn tens into a raise, this D?
You're still flattening with five fives with the bet and raise?
I mean, no, 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 no. Oh, I see what you're saying.
So then it's really like sevens, nines, and tens, and jacks?
Yeah. We, I, I'd be cool fighting jacks here as well, so.
Sure.
Alright, let's do it. Call, it is for me at least.
I would raise, call it.
Alright, let's do it.
Um, I'm not even sure we love this scenario. Uh, when it goes bet, raise on the flop, you have to think one of the two opponents has an eight or at least has the possibility of having a lot of eights in their range a lot of the time. Obviously, they both could have overpairs, one of them could have a bluff, you know, but some of them could have had, could have an eight. You wanna ask yourself, though, which eights are we actually likely to be against? Well, the obvious ones are ace-eight suited, king-eight suited. And then what? Ten-eight suited, nine-eight suited, eight-seven suited, eight-seven suited, right? So if you think about that range, we lose to ace-eight and king-eight, but we beat ten-eight, nine-eight, eight-seven. So essentially, we are good about sixty percent of the time, assuming that's our opponent's range. Now, we also have to worry about the three combinations of pocket twos, which hurts us a little bit. So, um, you know, it's kind of like a fifty-fifty situation when we are against exactly an eight. Of course, again, we're not always against exactly an eight, and for all we know, maybe our opponents will have a hand like aces that they just cannot fold. So what do we do? Well, if we call, that pretty much announces that I have an eight, right? Because if I call, I have no fold equity, and what am I actually checking and then calling a bet and a raise on the flop with here? It's gonna be like literally an eight. So if I have an eight, my opponent should just never put any more money in the pot if they can't beat the eight, right? If, um, I raise, though, I, in theory, get some fold equity, right? If I raise, let's say, twelve thousand, now I could be raising here with a hand like ten-nine of spades, which I actually think would be a pretty sweet play every once in a while. Not a lot, you probably don't wanna be bluffing here all that often, but every once in a while, I think that's fine. Um, so I think I just wanna go ahead and play a big pot here. Another big problem with calling is that if, what, both of our opponents happen to have overpairs, they have four outs to beat us, and they probably, like I said, they won't put any more money in unless they actually do beat us. So I do make it twelve thousand this time. I don't think we need to jam. If we jam, um, there's like no possibility that aces calls us. And also, I think when you do make it twelve thousand, you will get a little bit of action from some hands that should not give you action every once in a while. So that's what we do. And now, under the gun makes it twenty-four thousand. Awful. Should we fold, call, re-raise to thirty-four thousand? Can we even make it thirty-four thousand? Have to make it thirty-six thousand. Make it thirty-six thousand, or go all-in?
What y'all think? Giving up? Got a better eight? Colin?
Alright, can you hear me? Tell me back.
Bet the nuts! I mean, eight isn't a bad score, but I guess just like always, just bet the-
Always bet the nuts, yeah. We talk, God, we talk about this so much, betting the nuts. And then find a way not to bet the nuts, but we need to just bet the nuts, is what it turns out to, so I like it. You are right, you're right. Um, so this is, uh, pretty fucking gross, bro.
This is really gross.
I hate this. I am in a twenty-five K? Oh my God, dude.
I thought what was really interesting was the nine-ten suited, a bluff option. Like, I don't see that, I don't see that line myself very often. I thought that was kind of interesting, cool.
That would be sexy-ass play. I'd never see, I mean, yeah, I, I, I don't make that play too often.
All the backdoor draws, we have all the eights in our hands still, even though we're not holding one in that scenario. Pretty awesome.
Yeah, it is. That's, that would be an awesome line to just check raise nine-ten of spades. Oh my God.
We had a bunch of re-raises and all-ins and a yikes jam. Super gross. If it's something he says, then we jam.
Do we just call and then have pot behind and then just?
Hey, what's up, Tik?
I don't know.
I don't know who's over my top.
I don't know if calling might be better. I don't, I mean, what are we gonna do? I mean, shab, I just, just shab. Making it thirty-six, we're not folding.
Yeah, like clickback, clickback, like Jesus.
That would definitely be entering a realm I'm not like super familiar with, we getting to clickback wars.
Like that ace-eight and a boat, slick. So it's jam or call for me?
Yeah, it's jam.
And now I'm-
Kind of leaning towards call. I don't know.
Well, I'm leaning towards call too, because I'm not a hundred percent sure. This is the nuts now.
Called in what? Just call and that, and they go broke?
I mean, fuck, am I ever folding here? How can I fold?
I'm not fucking folding. I mean, it's a twenty-five K.
Only have the ace-eight and deuces, right?
Yeah, he mean, what else?
Yes.
Do you think he ever does this with like pocket aces just to kind of freeze up the rest of the action in a pot? Like, he just does this with aces, we call or jam, and then he has an easy decision? Moving forward, put the rest of the hand?
The problem one too is like, Montz is jamming his eyes, betting a big pair. The problem here is like, when we five-bet jam this for a hundred bigs, like, how is it not an eight?
Yeah, we get worse.
At that point, I'm folding. I mean, if you didn't fold aces by this point,
Yeah, he's fucking folding.
What more do you need to see for you to hear eight, or pocket deuces?
Yeah.
We're talking about a five bet, a hundred bigs deep in a twenty-five K. Soft to twenty-five K or not?
Alright, let's see what our chat's saying. People are pretty sick. Fold, I guess. Somebody says fold, I guess. I'm not folding. If we could just, if we call, we get jammed on, on the turn. My initial instinct, yeah, I mean, rip it in, I don't think.
When I'm looking at this, here's my problem. My thought is, do I, if I jam it here, is aces still calling?
But we gotta need.
If I flat it here, is aces ever betting another diamond this pot?
Well, he can also have seven, eight. I mean, why aren't people opening seven, eight, ten, eight, nine, eight, nine?
So I'm like, I'm not worried about the eights, cause those are coming along no matter what, right? We're just gonna get paid by those.
Drew says go all in. What's up? Good morning, Drew. Um, sheesh. There's forty-four in there. We put in twelve, there's gonna be fifty-six and we are going to have forty-four behind. When we put in a twelve, it's gonna be fifty-six in the pot, we're gonna have forty-four behind.
Yeah, so I'm not worried about ever folding this. I'm worried about if he's got aces, is he ever putting another diamond in this pot? So like, let's say, I flat this, I check turn, he's likely gonna check turn no matter what it is, right? And then on the river, I'm just gonna jam. And then is he then gonna call? Maybe.
Oh, god damn it. I don't know what to do. I could, I, I really, this is so tough. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's just GGs, right? Like, is it better to just call and let him?
I mean, I'm trying to, I mean, I'm hoping that when I'm playing this tournament, I'm rolled for twenty-five K or I just sold a fuckload of it. So like, if that's the case, then I'm gonna play this without fearing the replay. Exactly.
Oh, yeah, right.
Montz says he's not folding an overpair here in a twenty-five K, sure as fuck shit. This is a five bet pot for a hundred bigs.
Yeah, you, you can't, yeah, you be, you have to have some folds, like, you gotta fold here, Marlin, in my opinion, if you have aces.
Now, in a five dollar, whatever the fuck, like, by all means.
If we jam, we're only getting called by better. That's where I'm kinda leaning towards call.
Me too.
Alright, I'm calling, fuck it. I don't know, no way. He can, oh, that's not necessarily true, because he can open here with seven, eight, eight, nine and ten eight and EP or off a two hundred and fifty bigs. We're only eight-handed. I mean, it's not like he's gonna just play super nutty ranges at like a ten-handed table under the gun plus one. So he can't have worse. Do we jam and get those worst hits to call off right now? Oh my god, cause we're gonna, like I said, the pot, we're gonna have about a point eight SPR on the turn.
Yeah.
Or something like in that neighborhood, probably not exactly, but we're gonna have a fucking really shallow under pot left in the turn.
Alright, well, I have five jams and one call, so I'm gonna go with the army on this one, but I would be calling.
You're gonna jam?
Yep. I would call.
Alright, uh, Amy, what are we doing here? Let me know. It's on you, Amy. Divago, let me know. Whatever you say we do. Scrappy says, I'm still ripping it. He said, does he have king eight into the position? Yeah, cause we're rolled for it, right? Yeah, we just.
Re-bye, table six.
Two mil roll, let's go. It's not just, it ain't nothing but a thing, a two milli bankroll, so fuck it. Alright, let's make a decision. Um, I'm going to call and you're gonna shove and let's see what happens.
Alright.
Actually, thinking about this more, we could make it thirty-four thousand if we wanted to, because, um, I raised here eight thousand on top. Opponent then made it, oh no, opponent made it, uh, how much on top? Twelve thousand? So I can do it, have to make it thirty-six. My brain's not working apparently. Anyway, back here, now, I think we wanna do everything we can to induce bluffs, which sounds a little bit crazy, but like, if we jam, what happens, right? We always get action from the eights, but we get action from the eights all the time anyway. So we're not worried about that. We're really worried about how do we play for all of our money when we happen to have our opponent drawing thin with something ridiculous? Again, I don't think a whole lot of ridiculous actions happening here. I think we are against an eight and, or, or pocket twos, of course. And against the eights, like I said, we're basically break even. And if we're basically break even, we just cannot fold, given the pot's already huge. You may say, shouldn't we figure out a way to not put in the rest of our money, given we're in a tournament, we wanna survive? Eh, I mean, yes and no. Uh, the problem is this is a relatively tough tournament, so there's not actually much merit in hanging around if you're not gonna be able to produce much of an edge later. It's like right here, notice pot's already thirty-two thousand. Imagine we just get half this pot back and, I mean, that, folding essentially would then cost us, what, sixteen thousand chips on average? If I fold it at any point from now till the end of the hand. And sixteen thousand chips is a lot. I believe we did start with, um, I don't know, let's say a hundred or a hundred, I think, I think a hundred thousand chips. So sixteen thousand is, um, fifteen percent of a twenty-five thousand dollar starting stack, so call it thirty-two hundred bucks. Can't just be giving away thirty-two hundred bucks. And, um, so we'll accept the variance. Oops, we'll accept the variance and call. Turns a king, we check, opponent jams. Should we fold or should we call?
I think everyone's calling, right?
Alright, boys.
I mean, we can just click call, right? No one's ever folding at this point. Uh, yeah, I, I agree with the call. One, I, I like the idea of keeping the bluffs in. Like we said, like, when we five bet, jam this, aces start to fold. That's why calling is better than, than jamming on the turn.
Already ripped it in on the flop, Scrappy says. Yeah, JTO, you got, made a lot of good points there and we nailed it. Kind of touched on some of the stuff that Jonathan said by, you know, keeping in worse hands, we're trying to get more hands in the pot. But yeah, I, I completely agree. Um, yep, good game. Uh, twenty-five K rebis. I mean, we're not folding, call. So, I mean, no, yeah, good game, let's call. Like, there's no way. Uh-oh, better full, yeah. Here's the thing, if we're gonna fold turns, why the hell would we ever call flop? I mean, come on now, we're calling. Alright, let's call.
The king is, uh, both good and bad, right? Because now king eight suited is less likely. And, um, but pocket kings, if it did decide to play this way, which, you know, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, uh, now beats us. That said, I think we have an easy call. We're basically, we need to be good thirty-three percent of the time. I think we're probably good somewhere between forty and sixty percent of the time. And, you know, when the worst case scenario is you are barely behind. Or worst case scenarios are like a little bit ahead, uh, in terms of the equity you need. And the best case scenario is you're just crushing it. You just have to pop your money in. Um, I'm trying to think of ways this could get bad for me. I mean, I guess if the opponent's opening like ace eight offsuit or king eight offsuit, it could get bad, but I mean, the opponent's under the gun plus one. They really shouldn't be opening ace eight offsuit and king eight offsuit. Um, that's about it. You know, I guess it could also get bad for us if the opponent literally only re-raises the flop with ace eight and king eight suited and just calls with the worst eights, right? Then in that case, we are in very, very bad shape. Interestingly enough, going back to the flop, if the opponent did have an eight here, I think I like for them to just call my twelve thousand, cause they can easily get all the money in by the river anyway. And they wanna do everything they can to try to look like they have an overpair, if they do actually have an eight, right? Because, um, clearly they don't have very many eights in their range, whereas I, the big blind, have a lot of them. So for the big blind to re-raise here, they really do need a very good hand. And a very good hand is, what, pocket twos, ace eight, king eight? Is, um, ten eight, nine eight, eight, seven, eight, six suited, are those marginal made hands at this point? I mean, they kind of are, right? So if the opponent does recognize this, then their re-raising range may be exactly ace eight and king eight, in which case it, it gets way worse. And pocket twos again. Uh, that said, I'm not folding. We call. And I, I think folding would be a, a bit of a mistake, even, I mean, if we, if we don't, if we know exactly what the opponent's thinking and we just know they always have exactly ace eight or king eight or pocket twos, sure, you gotta fold. But you cannot know that. Don't think you know that. You may think that, but realize that just cause you think something does not necessarily make it true. So anyway, I do call. And we're against ace eight offsuit. Ugh, yuck. I really did not expect to be against ace eight offsuit. Um, mainly just because ace eight offsuit from under the gun plus one is quite loose. But hey, it's what the opponent did and, um, it certainly worked out for him this time.
Brutal.
Ace eight from early position, right?
Dusted twenty-five K. I mean, yeah, just like ace eight O. And then Jonathan's big blind at this table, like, ah, you know.
Soft twenty-five K.
Throw the cards at the dealers. Why did the dealers? No way. It's not the dealer's fault. I'd never about that.
Same difference. It's the same difference, we're going broke, but it's about going broke the right way versus the wrong way, as funny as that sounds.
Yeah. That damn Blake, thank you for that follow. Morton from Canada, thank you as well. Thank you guys for being here. Brutal, brutal, bro. That was a brutal, that one hurt. That was not a fun hand.
That one was expensive.
Yeah, that was an expensive ass hand of poker, twenty-five K. Yikes.
Got a hundred bigs, bang.
Hundred bigs, bang, bang. Uh, alright, alright, alright. Let's do another one. I picked that one. What you got?
Uh, let me filter this for tournaments here real quick. Um, let's go.
Let me do this.
We did that one. Let's do a live casino tournament. Let's six thirty-seven. You have that one?
Six thirty-seven, let me see.
How's it lock? So you might not, I don't know if you have that one or not.
I should, uh, let me see. Yeah, live casino, hundred dollar buy-in. These things are the softest things ever.
Ready for today. Getting ready for the live, the live one.
A live, a live hundred dollar tournament, like, last time I played one, I, I've played them in the past, the fucking things are like free rolls. I mean, it, it's, it's kinda, it's kinda crazy how soft they are, really. They're softer than ten dollar online tournaments, for sure. So, alright, yeah, let's take a look at this.
Self, don't play soft twenty-five K. Go.
Let's do it. Whoops.
Hey, everybody. So in this, you are in the big blind in a live casino tournament, hundred dollar buy-in. We hadn't talked live poker a little bit, so I thought I'd simulate a situation. Uh, I see all the time and help you guys with it. So you have ace of hearts, nine of diamonds here, you're in the big blind. Uh, villain is gonna be in the small blind. Uh, the villain plays one-three recreationally, a little inexperienced. He knows his way around a poker table, but he's not really the ringer in the room. Nice enough, but that's about all you know about him. Uh, you have twelve thousand eight hundred eighty-three, obviously not a live, uh, tournament poker stack, but when I'm simulating situations, I, I find them from online tournaments, you know, co-op them. And sometimes the stacks are a little funny, that happened to me too. Uh, but anyway, uh, so he goes in and raises a little bit bigger than normal. And blind's at one twenty-five, two fifty, uh, with a thirty and a, uh, pre-flop here. Do you wanna fold, call, raise to two thousand or raise to twenty-four hundred?
Hmm.
Man, was that one low. That was even low for a sassenado.
Yeah, yeah, shit. I had to turn my shit all the way up, but yeah, his shit's always low.
Alright, so what are the options here? Call or one of these raises? It always bugs me when there's like a two K raise and like a twenty-four hundred raise. They're so close.
Right, yeah, it's just splitting hairs kind of between the two.
Hmm. I mean, I know what I'm doing. I'm not sure if it's gonna be what a sassenado's doing or not.
Yeah, you're never sure if what you're gonna do is like what he's gonna do, because, you know, he, he, he's got a read on this guy. He says he's a one-three player. Probably kind of okay, solid, but is not like one of the ringers, the best players in the room or anything like that, so, um, I mean, I we just turn this into a bluff.
The twenty-four hundred is Wisco's first reaction.
Wisco, ooh, okay. What are you guys doing? Three X, three bet and fold to a four bet?
What's up, David Scott? How you doing, buddy? He's calling.
So there's gonna be forty-eight, there's gonna be five K in the pot and then he's gonna have nah, yeah, I guess we could do that. Yeah, we could just do that. I mean, it does work from a price standpoint and we could just fold. Um, we got twelve K, it doesn't really hurt our utility. We still have that back. Um, calling when he goes this big, could be weird, um. We're in position though. Hmm. Rainmaker says call. We got a couple of three bets. Our hand is easily dominated post, but we're in position and it could easily be ahead. It's not like he's only raising better ace X. He's gonna use king jack, some of these other type of hands as raises as well. And he might just be opening pretty wide. I don't know. What do you think here, Toe?
Three bet, twenty-four hundred.
Yeah, same here.
I think he's actually one of the top of our range hands, right? Like ace nine off heads up is, is up there.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, you know, the thing about it is like, our raw equity in continuing post-flop and playing this post-flop, when he does c-bet on a lot of different textures, it's gonna be very difficult, where we have one of the best hands right now. We have fold equity, he could fold. Really don't hate a three bet at all, you know?
I mean, that's where I'm at. If you flat, you're just gonna check fold, it's only flop. Well, maybe not a sassenado. But in general, people are gonna check fold a lot of flops, cause it's not that connected, even though it is the best hand now, it's kinda vulnerable. I kinda want the initiative going to the flop. I'd rather have him check to me so I can c-bet versus flattening this and facing a c-bet always.
Right.
So, yeah, that's why, you know, I would do it. Uh, there's a lot of calls. One, two, three. It's funny, all the team toe guys are three betting and then everybody else is calling.
Yeah, my, my chat's all over the place right now. We got call. We got more three bets though than call with this small blind opening range. It's really hard to say for people, um, it, you know, we don't really know strategically how he's gonna, he's a cash game player, right? Um, so we don't know if he's gonna use strong linear, just only strong linear, if he's gonna just open here with the polarized range and then flat everything in between, where he's only opening the strongest, then opening some of the suited, bad garbage type hands. So it's really hard to say.
Marlon says, if we call, we can still raise this flop, but the problem with that, Marlon, is, is assuming we don't have a hand of any kind. Now we're just kind of three betting in the dark. We haven't narrowed his range at all. We don't know if he set this flop or not, we're just kinda blindly raising that. Versus, we raised this pre, we've narrowed his range to a much tighter range of hands that can call the three bet. And we can have a better idea of what kind of flops he hits and what kind of flops he does. What a good barrel of cards and what aren't. We get more information that way.
Morton says call, Rainmaker says call, Scrappy says three bet. Good game, hop into five hundred, bye. Um.
He says one-three player's flat a lot, so we could be building a huge pot here. Do we want that? Um, I, for me, um, I want to put, another thing I didn't mention that I'm looking at the stacks now, like, this guy's got about thirty-ish bigs, like, we can put a lot of pressure on his stack by three betting and c-betting flop. And c-betting flop small, you know, if we get raised, we, we just get away, you know what I mean? Um. So yeah, we can put a lot of pressure on his stack this way and really make him, really make him squirm in his chair. Or he just snap shoves and we're like, oh shit, ace nine's no good.
A live casino, one hundred dollar buy-in. Alright, I'm raising. Let's just, uh, I understand Morton, I know we can call, but I wanna apply pressure to this cat. He did go a little over three X, but that's kinda as he should raise this size, playing it out of position. So I make it twenty-eight seventy-five. Then you're getting very close. It's gonna be fifty-six, fifty-eight in there, then he's gonna have about almost pot behind. We're getting very close to, almost being two to pricing ourselves in, the bigger we go. Think twenty-four is about the top where we can make it and fold. So let's do twenty-four. Yeah.
Um.
You ready?
Yeah, I just don't know if I should go with the army or, or go with what I would do. The army said.
The army wants to call?
Yeah. Alright, army, we're going with you guys today. Let's see it. I'll be three betting it though.
Yeah.
One of the reasons that I brought up here is the live player is live players in live casino tournaments will do these really big raises when they play one-three normally, because you do have to raise bigger in cash games for anyone to if you want half the table to call you, you can raise to two point five X, but a lot of guys prefer to just play heads up or with two other guys, so they raise a little bit bigger. And sometimes you'll see people in tournaments go, I'm in tournament mode. And they'll see a guy do a bigger raise like this and they think, oh, he must be in tournament mode too, and that must be aids plus ace queen plus. No, he most likely has a lot of the weaker aces, so you can go ahead and just call here. If you three bet, my problem I have with that is you gotta make sure you're not projecting how you think about poker onto the other person. So to you and I, we don't think if we were in villain thirteen spot there, that we would have a call. But he, we would think it's a four bet or fold situation, but he's not gonna see it like that. If he just likes his hand at all, he's gonna call you. And even if he has something like a six, five of clubs, if he could see our hand, well, peeling is not the worst thing. He has thirty-five, forty percent equity versus that. So we do go ahead and call here and don't fold, that's a little too tight. So we call. And the board comes six, four, two, and he leads into it. So here, do you wanna fold? Call, raise to two six nine five or raise to thirty-three hundred nine five?
Sounds like a sassenado's getting a little sick.
Yeah, I know, he's like losing that voice as well.
Uh, I, I, I have some thoughts about his commentary. He said that if he's got a hand like five, six of clubs, he's just gonna peel it. But like, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. As we sure, I mean, I as we sure I mean I I'd be way more yeah I'd be peeling that but um
yeah but if I three bet this and and he peels five six suited I'm fist pumping I'm cool
yeah exactly
anyways interesting well the army got it though they called what was how many points was the raise
uh the raise was twenty four uh six points so he didn't like to raise much it's like middle middle of the ground
cool uh I mean we flatted and now we're here like we said we were gonna be
yeah like here we go I know I mean I know what I'm doing here but I want to see what chat has to say it's clutch Jay what's up yeah I'm not probably I mean I might take a sm- a couple of small shots and try to get into venom but I'm not like yeah I gotta win a thirty dollar tournament there I'm trying to play two Ks doesn't really matter um so rainmaker says full we got a couple calls from Morton
I got a couple raises to twenty six ninety five in my chat
yeah it's I think I think we're just calling here I mean we have ace high we can have the best hand um I'm just calling cuz ace nine could be good here um and he still see bats a lot of his Jack tens worse ace highs there's only a few that don't really connect close here but um yeah we keep in this bluff and when we start raising we could be bluffing with the best hand right now I don't know
yeah
I'm not gonna what do we turn this into a block
three twenty six ninety fives
like razor will be insane because he can still have like very good hands as well it's not like you know he could still have fucking Kings or something
we don't we didn't know any ringers we have no idea where we're at
yeah yeah just raising here and he gets to have all the over pairs in a very strong range seems kind of suicidal so these raises it's just call for me it's just call
yeah it's four to three call now five to three call um so yeah I'm
clutch Jay says he saw you at a Mexican restaurant in Vegas
me
yeah you're celebrity bro you know this
must have been Zapatas
Zapatas I'm not sure he didn't say but
it was Zapatas at tacos so gordo cool let's uh let's go
yeah I mean it's I think we call here for sure
that's good
one play you can pull here in live tournaments all the time is just raise back because this is why I love this hand it demonstrates something pre flop people will not like folding that's not the time to put pressure in live casino tournaments but on flops the average guy in Pokerstars here if you raise is gonna be a little suspicious right cuz are you really raising a six you raising a set of fours seems like a board you'd slow play on if you had something good but in a live casino tournament uh you're not really playing chicken here online you're playing chicken you're just thinking I I don't think you can jam in I think you have a high card most of the time and you're uh in he does have a high card literally north of six
oh that's his fault he's even just see what happens there's any more action after this it's out of here
uh here you raise and you raise because most likely he has high cards and in live tournaments guys will just see they miss the flop and they'll fold there's only two cards to come there's not much hope uh there will be random guys that do call but the vast majority will fold whereas pre flop there's so much hope with three cards to come on the flop they're not gonna do it uh you can raise to thirty three ninety five but I I don't think it's as necessary uh I think you just gotta raise something here it's gonna be really hard for him to three bet back with that stack you make it twenty six ninety five the reason I don't like call in live tournaments is that's a really good move if you're playing against a good player cuz he's gonna think you have something decent uh but the confused one three player is just gonna go uh 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 okay I bet on the turn that's actually a pretty good idea because now if we wanna raise him that's like all of his chips and most of us are not gonna do that so uh we do go ahead and raise here now he gets really pissed when you do this looks at you takes about twenty seconds and he looks at the dealer and goes I'm all in what do you wanna do here do you wanna fold or you wanna call special situation
don't like it I love you Alex but I don't like I don't like it
he calls you I'm gonna fall out of my chair
I I hate this why do we do this
I don't know I mean I would use the same exact amount of chips but I would just wield them differently myself
yeah dude I mean
chips pre flop and then bet the flop and then we have more of this the problem with this is that what hands that hit this board do we flat with pre eight sevens sets
I mean eh eh we should be
that's it and sets maybe not
he opened he see bad and then he rips like he can still have all the over pair like he hasn't done anything to say he doesn't have a monster why can't he have Kings cuz he looked at me angry and then looked at the dealer and says I'm all in
you gonna let him mean mug you you going down
yeah you got me buddy what the fuck bro I mean I'm yeah I mean he has King Jack of Hearts and we're fucking god we just snap him off you know yeah no King he's got King Jack a diamond you know like I don't know the look at you angry seems really dishonest training here yeah I don't know like this is Alex just using the exploitative route you know a lot of this is technical and theoretical I I kind of disagree I would wanna play sound fundamental poker here and not do this
buying where people are extra spazzy then I don't need to get creative
we don't have to do shit like this I don't know I mean we just I don't know I kind of disagree but you know
my chat says sixes ain't screwed
oh man I mean we're folding like it just has to be a snap boys what's up T dubs good morning man asinine good morning ace is suited yeah man
and say Alex told me to raise or fold
God VIP ATL my dude he is here what's up with that yeah I mean
buddy as hell
uh we're just hitting fold boys I mean I think it would be a mistake to just take this line and call
let's do it
when inexperienced players act like they're angry that's almost especially if it's a guy I don't know why this is but a guy in his thirties or forties just the really pronounced I'm mad all in that people uh you know there there are occasions it what that tends to be when I notice it is it's a hand that's not really terrific but he's not willing to let go of which we're eh sometimes you'll see a young internet kid go oh I guess that's like seven eight right or it's uh it's like a backdoor book or something it's like no that tends to be like pocket A's pocket nine pocket ten something they're really pissed off about or even like ace king uh none of these hands you beat I've seen so many internet whiz kids trying to do a hero call here and then look at the ace queen and you just feel so bad for them because they're angry all in it's it's a they're right it's not sixes fours or twos it's not a sat but it tends to be something so yeah we should just go ahead
that was um yikes uh
so I have a question about his analysis if if the guy looked at the dealer and smiled and said all it would that have changed his situation where he might call here thinking this guy's got like seventy
yeah I don't know like it's like oh he's he's smiling he's trying to portray happiness and strength so we're gonna call here cuz he's gonna have King Queen you know like I I don't know I don't I don't think we should be trying unless we have this the strongest read of all time I don't think we should be trying to play that style of exploitative poker and we should just play very good sound fundamental poker
especially these lower buy
at these lower buy ins we don't have to fucking like do this shit to win we can just crush you know what I'm saying let's just move on to the next one that one really that that was that was uh that was painful
we'll cut that one out and edit
we'll cut yeah 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 yikes alright I guess it's uh my turn I think I need to it's been a minute since we've played some afleck you know we gotta go to
cool which one you want
wait a minute is this uh is this the new dude Tristan Wade got a two five does he have any tournament ones Lexi Gavin
um he's got a two five if you wanna do a cash one I'm I'm down if you wanna try the uh six thirty two check out the new guy
uh yeah we can check out the new guy let's see yeah let's just check out with with number
it's right in your wheelhouse
yeah I like it already let's do it two five cash yeah this guy's a beast dude I used to follow him back in the day very good player
yeah I I know nothing about him so it'll be interesting and it's cash game so we're out of my wheelhouse
alright let's do it wild and loose cash game two five let's check it out
hello there I am Tristan Wade for pokercoaching.com and here we're gonna talk about a hand played in a two five no limit hold'em cash game action folds to us on the cutoff with King three suited and what would you do would you fold would you call would you raise to fifteen or would you raise to twenty
that hair was sauce he says just just was suited uh T was suited yeah that shit was super sauce so we got some fifteens in the chat relying on a live tail after butchering this hand seems weird that hand was uh that's the most uh uh we're not gonna talk trash cuz Alex Alex has put out some fire and we've looked at a lot of his you know he's got a lot of good content that hand just was kind of painful but it was a learning something to learn from for sure alright
yeah I listen yeah I mean the guy's a killer uh he does things different when we know that but like that one hurt my brain uh is this Trevor oops I mean Tristan yes uh we'll call him T what's everyone doing out here uh I see a bunch of fifteen starting to stream into my chat
wild and loose on us yeah I'm I mean I'm probably going twenty but I mean I'm a in cash I just tend to go bigger at some of these if the table's wide and loose and I know I'm gonna be playing multi way I'm most likely gonna go to twenty but fifteen can't be a mistake
yeah uh my instinct is to go fifteen but um
I'm a twenty guy in cash
yeah I guess out of position I'd be raising the four X twenty in a high rig environment twenty bunch of fifteen Cyrus is fold um I don't hate of course it's a little bit low on the opening but I think opening is okay too
well yeah I mean like it's interesting I mean well live cash specifically I'm not like acting like I'm some cash god or play a lot of cash but when I do play cash and I studied cash and had a chance to commentate on some cash um when we have like a dynamic in our table that's very loose we got a wild loose guy behind some regs I'm just gonna use a bigger sizing um hopefully get heads up with one of these guys and if we go ten fifteen we could likely go for a wave so I'm gonna go twenty
that makes a lot of sense uh one two
we're never folding do not
twenties one two three four fifteens I'm going fifteen the army but I makes sense to go twenty really does I can see it
we went to buy the button maybe we want twenty I could see that as well so yeah I'm gonna go twenty and see what happens let's do it
makes sense
I think raising here is absolutely the right play we have a suited King we only have one person who has position on us and with everyone having two hundred big blinds here sure we could make a standard three X open but typically these games play a little bit bigger so my default is usually twenty dollars and I think if it's a deeper game this helps create a little bigger pots and also thins some of the ranges to keep some of these really trash hands out of there we get called by the button we get called by the small blind small blind is wide and loose and the big blind also calls the flop comes King three four with a flush draw and the wild and loose small blind player bets twenty five into a pot of about eighty the big blind folds and actions back onto us what should we do here should we fold should we call should we raise to sixty five or raise to a hundred
uh yeah so twenty made a lot of sense I really did
yeah I mean like he said the games are gonna play a little bit bigger like I'm I don't I rarely go three X unless the game is kind of playing small and there's some nits behind who overfold but you have anybody sticky playing hands people mixing it up you we have to constrict their ranges a little bit you go fifteen people are playing entire ranges like yeah I love cash it's been a minute I might play I gotta play some there
alright so what are we doing here uh I just I didn't realize we had two pair I thought we had top pair shit kicker so we have two pair here guys hold up says uh got poker Satan uh is it Satan or satin I can't tell cuz the numbers in there just popped in over here loving the stream for the first time awesome welcome guys welcome
interesting
we do this every Saturday noon eastern nine AM Pacific uh with the pokercoaching.com content exclamation point PC in my chat exclamation point PC in sixes chat uh for a link to go sign up you can get free twenty five quizzes homeworks webinars all that good stuff or sign up for the premium for over six hundred and fifty quizzes and other shitloads of content so make sure including stuff created by me and by sixes so uh make sure you check that stuff out um sixty five sixty five sixty five hundred um is what I'm seeing in my chat
yeah I'm seeing a lot of more hundreds but I got sunset sixty five hands he says sixty five sixty five for Drew um people want a higher option somebody saying one fifty in this bitch like they just want more so
why they so greedy
yeah so greedy I mean we do wanna keep in worse King X and you know some ace four with the ace of hearts and ace three with his people this guy is wild and loose um so yeah I mean going bigger than a hundred probably wouldn't be too big of a mistake considering there's you know one oh five out there but I mean I'm just going a hundred here
yeah looks like I got one two three sixty fives and five hundreds a a hundred makes sense to me um because everything that's called like when this guy leads out here he's gonna have a ton of flush draws and then King X and then things like five six suited maybe six seven suited something like that
it just feels like
and a lot of those are gonna come along when I go a hundred here
it just feels like his range when we're this deep almost should be in elastic when he does continue like I mean it's not like he might what does he lead with and then fold like I don't know it just seems like he's gonna have a lot that could continue so I am going to go a hundred and uh see what happens
uh as nine bowman says call and keep the button in and let him hang himself the flush draw is not a major threat um I would say bet the nuts because we're gonna get value right now from all those draws and
yeah
single pair of Kings that might you know we might lose on a turn they've got something like King Queen in a heart six a seven a five a deuce come on the turn they're gonna not be very happy and we're gonna start to lose value that we could get now
keep the dunk who is dunk leading in flat we're not no we don't wanna flat uh because you can get value yeah yeah I mean if he dead ever lead something like fives to nine anyway and you're worried about losing that big deal I mean we're just trying to target the draws and the worst King X and hands like that in his range um so we should try to maximize value from those hands so I'm gonna raise to a hundred here and see what happens
most of us are doing that too let's check it out
I think raising to a hundred is the best play here we have top and bottom pair our hand is good but the board is a little scary and we wanna start building a pot now to hopefully get as much money as possible from the wide and loose small blind and also this discourages the button to call us uh too wide here since he's got only twenty chips invested and he'd have to call another hundred to see a turn card so I think making a bigger sizing here closer to the size of the pot rather than something smaller and being cute is the best play here we get the uh button out and the wide and loose player calls the turn card comes a six of clubs now there's two flush draws and the small blind checks to us what would you do now
I would pull up a calculator hang on
alright I know what I'm doing but let's see what everyone says
I need a calculator and then I'll and then I'll know what I'm doing
this fifty six bigs out there we have two hundred and eighty dollars in the pot we have eight eighty behind he has eight eighty behind both about a hundred seventy six bigs so we have about uh SPR of about three a little over three three point two or something like that so I know what I'm doing
yeah I am definitely betting um I was trying to decide if I was gonna go one seventy or two twenty one seventy is sixty percent of the pot that's what I needed the calculator for that makes me feel like that's what I'm gonna do if I go one seventy let me think about this
it's three forty plus two eighty
six twenty in the pot and eight eighty minus one seventy yeah it's about that's just about pot so yeah I'm going one seventy and then jamming all blank rivers
Okay.
Everybody in my chat going two twenty.
What are you guys doing? Two twenty, well, let's see, uh, let's see what the chat says, this shit is blowing up. Thank you for that follow, ace is suited as well, appreciate that buddy, welcome. Uh, yeah, like I said, monotone board, you can raise, so we got two twenty, two twenty. Uh, I don't see why go any smaller, ace five, uh, bet to two, all two twenties. Charges ass to max, smoking, one seventy makes.
Um, seventy seven, if he's gonna, if he's gonna call one seventy, will he call two twenty?
Yeah, if he's calling one seventy, is he calling two twenty? I was always going one, I was always going two twenty.
I mean, probably, but I still think like I, I, I'm setting up the pot well. I don't know, do I need to go like eighty percent pot here?
So, think about this, like, first, if you're trying to set the pot up well, right, like, don't we wanna give him a better price to call it off? With a wild and loose player say it comes like.
That's eighty percent pot, seventy-eight percent pot, two twenty.
Hmm, yeah, I mean, I'm just, uh, going two twenty.
If we were deeper, I would go two twenty to try and get more chips in on the river, you know what I mean? But here, I think I can go one seventy and jam rivers.
Yeah, but we can go two twenty and jam rivers and give him a worse price, making him feel more committed to call if he does have a king. He just feels more compelled, he just feels compelled with, oh, if he's going, has a king, he's going broke anyway, so we wanna give his. Draws a little bit better of a price.
I'm going one seventy, everyone in the world is going two twenty and you guys play cash more than me, whoever you are, cause I play cash like fifteen times. So, let's go.
Alright, let's do it, two twenty it is, boys.
If you selected a big bet sizing here of two twenty, that's absolutely the right answer. Anyone should be betting the turn here, although a couple straight draws have landed. Deuce five and five seven, which a wide and loose player could have, but with all the other hand combinations out there, including flush draws. We're not overly scared of being beaten here by a straight or a better two pair. So we absolutely must bet the turn, and we should go for a bigger sizing now that this board's just getting scarier. And there are some hands that have connected with the turn card, such as five, six, six, seven. And some combo draws that have hearts included in them, that a wide and loose player will continue to put money in to see a river. So we go ahead and we bet the big sizing of two twenty and the small blind calls. Now, our pot's getting pretty big at this point, and we don't get the best river card, but our opponent has checked. There's now a four liner straight out there, the flush draws have both missed, and what should we do now? Should we check? Should we bet two fifty? Should we bet five hundred or should we go all in?
That river does suck, bone iron, it does.
Sorry, I had you muted.
Yep.
Oh, fuck me.
Uh, I gotta bet two fifty out there right away, um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kinda have a feeling what I'm doing, but. This is tough now.
Yeah, the, my instinct is check, um, I can kinda see going for thin value because the straight. Does the wild and loose guy check the river?
I mean, there's a hundred and forty-four big blinds out there, how grea- this is tricky as hell.
I mean, if it's bad, it's bet fold.
Jesus Christ, bet folding to a wild.
Joseph, if you really turn a hand over by shoving, definitely not, it's a bet fold spot, if anything, I would not shove.
I mean, yeah, we're worse hands gonna call us, king, queens folding, like, king, jacks folding, king tens folding.
Jeff wants to check back here, I agree, Jeff.
I mean, the problem is, like, I want to, I, I kinda wanna bet small, just because. He can have a straight draw like five, six, you know, we can get value from, um. Still might get called for two fifty by some worse king X, even on this board. We don't need to make a polarizing bet, he most likely has a, this is fucking tough, I don't know what I do here, let's see what the chat says.
Uh, everyone in my chat, well, was it two fifty?
Somebody said two fifty, wow, chat is blowing up, let me look at this, eh, Ohio State.
Seven hearts, gee, and I don't know that he checks the straight on the river very much. And I don't think he re-races us with his two pairs, I think he's gonna call us.
You think he leads into us with the, you think he leads into us? Oh, we're out of position, he's on, uh, he's in a small blind, so.
Yeah, he was leading to us.
You think he will lead into us with a straight?
He knows they wanna check back and get checked always, right, all the king X checks, so.
Yeah. Yikes, but two fifty, but they unfold to a jam, yeah, look, look at the pot when we bet two fifty and fold to a jam.
When you braise pre-bet flop bomb turn here, you have a shitload of king X.
Yeah, I think I'm going two fifty, um.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, five hundred, best five hundred, dude, we bet five hundred, we leave once. You know, we leave like one ten behind or something like, or one sixty behind.
Right, yeah, uh, Cash Game Specialist says, bet two fifty, I, I can definitely see that, man, I could definitely.
Oh, he checked, so I check, I'm checking, but two fifty makes sense, so we're getting a lot of checks in two fifties.
Me too.
Why size up, turn, and then down bet river, just check, well, look at this, we can also, well. Yeah, we can just check and get the showdown and win this pot alive, what are we really hoping to get called by? There are some chances we get check raised, ah, fuck, man, I might just take the money.
I would definitely take the money, um, but I can see the argument for betting thin, I really can.
But I mean, if we're betting, if we're betting, bet folding, when you could just check, jam, miss flush draws and, oof.
I mean, we did bet in three hours, bitch.
This is tough, dude. Yeah, we did twenty.
Okay, but thin value is how you make all your money in cash.
Two fifty, alright.
The argument.
Alright.
The argument.
Alright, I, this time, it's time, we gotta go with the chat, I'm seeing a lot of two fifties, Clutch J, what you saying?
That's what I say, a lot of checks, but the two fifty means a lot of sense, I see.
Yeah, yeah, alright, whatever you say, Clutch J is what we're doing in this, what do you like, we got a perfect score right now, don't fuck this up for me. Don't ruin this for me, bro, what do you wanna do? It's Clutch J, it's on you. He says two fifty, two, bet two fifty, brother, that's kinda my, we're doing it.
Alright, I'm gonna check just because we got more of those, but two fifty makes a lot of sense.
Alright, two fifty it is, let's go, then value.
If you pick check, you're absolutely right. You should be checking this river, sure, against some opponents who are very wide and loose, you could maybe bet the river for value. Being any bet sizing, um, if you know the person has a king or is just gonna call you with a hand. Like two pair, well, then I think you should be going all in, you might as well get the max value. Um, if you thought the opponent's range was a little bit weaker to one pair hands, then I think this is a board that you could maybe. Bet a third of the pot or smaller than half the pot to get called. But more or less on this board texture, if you bet, bet, shove, you're not gonna be called by. Uh, very wide range typically, and especially with a deuce or a seven making a straight. And our opponent can totally have some of those hands in his range, so I think this spot is just a river check back. If it didn't connect as well with the board, then I could see us going for value on a four liner straight, or if there was. Um, not a four liner, if there was like a gap in there or something, we could, we could think about getting value. But in this particular board against this opponent, I think the pot's big enough. And we're just not gonna get called by worse hands on the river if we bet this river too much. So I'm happy to check, get to a showdown, hope that my two pair is good, and unfortunately, in this hand, I saw that my opponent got lucky. But if I see the board run out, I was able to have my opponent put in a lot of money, drawing pretty slim getting to the river. And I didn't have to pay any more money on the river to see his hand, so I think checking the river is the best play, and I hope you enjoyed this hand.
Super gross, Ginger, super gross. Super gross.
What a guy, I like that quiz, man, I like, uh, that's the first quiz I've ever done of his, and I really liked it, I really liked the way he laid out. The information, it was concise, it was quick, don't stop. Um, and then, yeah, I liked the way he, uh, laid out that hand, that was a good first hand.
Yeah, absolutely, it was good, it was super good, made a lot of sense.
Alright.
He just says, uh, goddamn nits.
Check like a, yeah, yeah, I mean, thin value, but I mean, when he says, we take in consideration he's a wild and loose player, so he's gonna have. More deuces and sevens than maybe a straight forward reg or something like that, or, you know, so his range is gonna be a bit wider. So, yeah, that works.
Uh, Deuce says he's got a king, eight, king, nine, king, ten, king, jack, king, queen, all call, I would, I disagree with that one on a four liner board, I think a lot of, some of those. For sure fold, but.
Yeah.
What I'll tell you is the five, six, three fives, you know, three, six, six sevens, shit like that, do call, and that's where you get your thin value.
Yeah, I really liked this quiz, though, I think he did a great job, and I'm looking forward to more of his stuff, guys, I'm glad that he's on part of the team now, so we'll be able to find good. Content from my man here, moving forward, as we do this weekly, yeah, you almost, you keep calling him Trevor, so.
T, good one from T, good one from T.
So, well, you got time for like one more, since I know you gotta go play that live tournament, how you feeling?
Rings, so I got, I got time for one more.
Alright, we got time for like one more, boys, it's gonna be a shorter one today, so who's gonna go win a ring, and I am. Gonna finish watching this Ohio State game at some point, so.
Alright, so let's throw one out there real quick, um, uh, we have another man, I feel like Jonathan Little today, huh?
We've, no, we've done John, uh, we've done Jonathan Little, he had that really crazy, crazy hand, the hardest one of the day, with the Jack eight. So we haven't done an Aflac one today, or Lexi Gavin, uh, but we've already did our little bit of cash.
I think she only has one quiz out too, and we already took it. I think she's got more content to come.
Dude, with Sapphire, Clutch J said, yo gods, big toe, it's Sapphire on you after we final table this Planet Hollywood.
Booyah.
Is that, is that a strip joint with it's with Sapphire?
It's one of the biggest ones in the world.
What? And I've been to Vegas thirty times and didn't even know that?
It's actually a male and a female one, like, I think it's, I've never been there, to be honest with you, but the downstairs is girls and the upstairs is guys. So like, if you have a bachelor, bachelor party, you could both go to the same place and meet up afterwards to get down.
No, that's crazy.
Yeah. Uh, cool, uh. He can do this over Planet Hollywood for the seventeen hundred main event. Alright, so let's do, uh, I guess, I don't know.
I'm looking for, we've done a lot of quizzes, bro. Six twenty-eight, let's see what that is.
What's cool is like, I've only done five or six by myself when I first started to get a feel for them.
Yeah.
Um, and then like the rest we've done on stream, so it's kinda crazy.
He's never been there, right, T does.
I haven't, I actually never been there.
Yeah, okay.
Two different ones in my life, and one of them was my bachelor party, I think that was the last time.
Look at this guy, two strip clubs in his life, what a guy.
Curious, what is my grade on these quizzes? I'm not sure of the question, um, the quizzes as a whole, I think are excellent. Um, you got a couple different coaches, or a few different coaches, and you get a few different aspects, um, there are definitely, um, times when I disagree with. Some of the coaches like that Matt Affleck, I'm not a Matt Affleck. You know, I definitely disagreed with that one, but, uh, yeah, you know, I think the ones that I made are particularly good.
I think my quiz is awesome, yeah, like, nah, but, no, there's some, I mean, it's good.
He's asking, what do you think our overall average score is on these quizzes? Um, I do pretty darn well on these.
Yeah, I mean, I'm usually one or two.
Uh, but like, Matt Affleck and Jonathan Little ones, I tend to just nail, um, because our styles are very similar, Alex Westjell gives me a little more trouble.
Right.
Yeah, but I, I do really well on them. Um, and it's not really fair for you to ask, for, not for you to ask, but it's totally fair for you to ask, but it's not really fair for Sixes or I. To take these scores and figure out what our average score is, cause a lot of times, we go with what you guys do versus what we would actually do. Um, so they're not really actual reflections of, of what we get, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we try to make it fun and interactive, and I always try to in- involve you guys with some of my decisions to make you feel a part of it. And not just, you know, it's, it's more fun like that than trying to do my best for every single score, you know, it's, it's, it's better. To get your input and do it that way, for sure, especially on close ones.
And you'll see, like, I even said a bunch of times earlier today, you know, like, I would call here, but I'm gonna raise, cause the army says so. You know, I would raise here, but I'm gonna call, cause the army says so, so, you know.
Right.
Um, cool, let's do a quiz, cause we only got one more, let's say.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought we, I'm on six twenty-eight, just waiting.
Oh, shit, uh, I'm with you, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Alright, take your time, it's cool, man.
I'm there, pretty good.
I check jam most things, what? Alright, let's do it.
Alright, today we're gonna start looking at the win six hundred dollar tournament, um, these hands are from day one of the tournament, so let's get through them. First hand, one hundred, one hundred blinds, twenty thousand chips, first level of tournament, we got black tens, early position. Very standard raise to three hundred. Uh, we got a call from the hijack, I don't know who he is, I would guess he was just by, you know. Making some assumptions, um, from what I've seen, how he looks, just kind of, I would assume he's on the tighter side. And we end up going six ways to the flop. The flop comes nine, three deuce, a couple of hearts and a spade. And it checks to us, we got our first decision, should we check, bet one thousand, bet fourteen hundred, or bet eighteen hundred?
Everybody coming along, everyone just wants to beat Matt Affleck, he's such a nice guy.
Alright.
Why you wanna treat poor Matt Affleck this way?
Yeah, he's six way, yeah, we're six ways going here, I mean. Ooh, Zombie says, check, Hanski says, bet fourteen.
Now I have a couple of one K's streaming in.
I know what I'm betting, but let's see what the chat says. Everybody's saying fourteen hundred.
One point four and a couple of one K's, big bet, eighteen hundred, we had spotted like one K for the bet, just wondering if we check, call. I don't wanna give that away yet, what happened?
I'm sorry, the options are here, yep.
Get out.
I'm checking, but I'm a noob and don't play.
So we're tied between one K and one point four, I think myself, my first initial instinct was one point four, um.
I know what I'm betting.
But now I'm kinda tossed up between the one K, one K's still a little more than half, eighteen hundred seems too big.
Eighteen hundred, fourteen hundred, eighteen, all big bets, zero, literally zero one K's in my chat.
Really?
I'm betting one K.
I got two one K's and two one point fours, and I'm tossed up as the tiebreaker.
Well, the thing is, like.
Like, I really wanna go twice, that's really what I wanna do.
So if the ranges are inelastic and some of those hands beat our hand, you know, like with better, like, sets. Two, twos, threes, nines, all within these ranges, ace, five of hearts, all these hands that can just have us beat right now. And the range is gonna continue inelastically, I just wanna go smaller, we're still gonna have the same amount of fold equity as fourteen hundred or eighteen. Uh, eighteen might make some hands fold, but the hands that are beating us or they have a lot of equity are gonna continue regardless. This bet is just going to thin the field enough. And we don't really know, even we have an overpair, we don't really know how fucking well we're doing in this spot, like, I don't know.
Get some of these players the hell out of here, like.
I like one.
This is a good, it's gonna get worse and uglier on turns.
I mean, yeah, like, no matter what, we're not gonna probably make everybody fold, going eighteen hundred, like, yeah, there's still a lot of sets in these range, I mean. People can have sets, uh, five, six of heart, you know, four, five of hearts, it's just a lot of like, I just wanna bet small, thin the field enough. And then make decisions on turns, like, I'm not, I don't know if I'm necessarily built in a pot for value. Although we have an overpair, it's still very close to me, I kinda wanna. Go smaller, but it's still big enough. I don't know, that's at least how I feel. Yeah, one K seems good now that I think about it more, it just seems right, check, no check, people were fighting about the check option in my check. Look at the dealer's smile and say, I'm all in, no, I'm kidding, eighteen, eighteen.
But if you do it, if you look at the dealer and angrily say all in, you project a different. Different outcome.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, one K, mostly one K's mine, we have a few one point fours, I think one K just eat it out.
You can get check raised at any of these sizes, and we're two hundred big blinds, you get check raised any size, dude. And plus, there's still these two, like, the check raises are gonna be smaller when you go one K at least, at least the check raises will be smaller.
Bro, I would like eleven or twelve hundred, to be honest, the best, so I'd split the difference personally in game, but yeah, one K.
Alright, I'm going one K, boys, we'll see what happens, um.
Like, we have a mandatory bet here, um, this might be unintuitive to some, but. You need to be betting pocket tens a lot more here than you bet pocket aces. And the reason is, is that pocket aces don't need that much protection, with pocket tens, any jack, queen, king or ace brings an overpair. Or overcard versus with aces, there's no overcard that can come, and so your hand leads less protection, so tens here are gonna be our. Most frequent bet out of the overten- overpair, um. I think betting a thousand, like, we're six ways here, so we don't wanna be putting a ton of money into the pot, but this is a really dry board. And we wanna fold out hands like king, queen of spades, ace, six of spades, like, these backdoor spade draws. We wanna fold, we don't wanna bet really small, let like ace of hearts, queen of diamonds peel, so, get some protection, I like betting. Get some protection, I like betting a thousand, fourteen hundred is fine too, and then I think when you get to eighteen hundred is a little too much. So we bet a thousand and this tighter player calls and we're heads up to the turn now, which is the king of clubs. Should we check, bet twelve hundred, bet two thousand or bet thirty-three hundred?
Interesting, they called, uh, thirty-eight hundred out there, checking or betting, guys, what do you think?
Alright, what are we doing now, boys?
What do you think? I got mixed emotions.
What did you bet? You bet a thousand?
I bet a thousand, got a ten, yeah.
Yep, nice. I'm sorry, here, here, here's the size, guys, sorry.
I mean, based on these, I think I know what I'm doing.
Yeah, let's see what everybody has to think.
This is twelve hundred for Cyrus. Two K or three point three, the wall on the ropes.
Passive fish, we played together, Salt Zombie, you're not a passive fish, stop it.
You don't fool us.
Yeah, you ain't fooling me, bro.
Goes checking. Two checks, a twelve hundred and a big bet, is what I got right now.
Checking, I don't know if I'm checking. Two K or three point three or a, or a better two K, we're getting a lot of two K's. Um, two K and pray. So hypothetically, we should be folding out some of the offsuit, king, queens, king, jacks, those kinda hands on, with our flop back. So we can eliminate, you know, all but. Eight combos of king, queen and king, jack suited, that might continue with, no, it's not even that, well, not even.
Bad, I mean, ace, king floats us, well, lid and raises pre, right? So it's no ace, king, so like, nothing, that's it, there's no kings.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, like, there's just gotta be king, queen of hearts, king, queen of. Uh, spades, king, queen, uh, king, jack of hearts, king, jack, so that's four combos right there of the king X that would continue. Uh, maybe king ten of, king ten of those same combos as well could, but this guy's kinda tight, so we got like six combos of suited kings that might call.
Show says, I have mixed emotions as well, the king should be good for our range, if we do decide to bet, I think it has to be two K. Really don't wanna give up the betting lead, but I see Merit checking as well, uh, King Tom and thank you for the follow, T Ben, thank you for the follow earlier as well. Got a couple of checks, Marlon said, I think if you check here, your hand is face up to an underpair, so make it two K. Um, how was your hand face up, right? Cause you'll have all bluff, so nine X is still coming along, right, Marlon? And then pocket eights, pocket sevens, probably still floating for a bet here, I would imagine. For one more and then giving up on river, cause we still have all the flush draws in our hand too, plus the king is a good bluff card. So if they have pocket eights, pocket sevens, I feel like they kinda have to call on them.
Someone said we could check, I don't know, man, we still, I mean, he's got more flush draws than he does. King X. Uh, in his range, I mean, uh, we, other than the king X, we kinda described suited backdoor king X, or not backdoor, suited flush draws. Um, king, queen of hearts, king, jack of hearts, things like that. Um, we blocked somebody, well, not king ten of hearts, but just those combos, I'd be concerned about, um, uh, with the king. I'm just gonna probably bet here.
Me too, I wanna get value from the nine, pocket eights, pocket sevens and flush draw, so I'm on team two K first.
Yeah, I'm on T, I was, yeah, I was like instinct, instinctually, I was just like betting two K a lot myself. Um, he could have king nine of diamonds, he could, what's up, K Millie, good morning, man, how you doing, buddy?
My last question, not betting the king, hitting the turn, we checked, it looks like we are worried of the king, I mean, yes, but then. Then we have to wonder if the nine, eight, sevens are going to fire river or not, I mean, I guess they still call. The problem there is like, if another overcard comes, we, we lose them where we get value here. So I guess that's what I would do. Uh, that's another reason for betting, because pocket eights and pocket sevens are going to call here, pocket nine's gonna call here, flush draw gonna call here. And on the river, those hands, you can either just get away, uh, or we both get frozen up, when a queen or a jack or an ace comes.
Yeah, he just gets a showdown with like ace nine or something himself.
Adam said he would lecture me for thirty minutes if we give up the betting lead here, fair.
Oh, thank you for being here, buddy. I'm gonna go two K.
Check more, good question, could we block if flush draws?
If what? If we have, uh.
We have a ten of hearts, would we check more?
No.
Cause he still has the nine and all the underpairs.
I mean, we can still get value, we can still charge nut flush draw hands, I think our hand still needs a, a, a little bit of protection. And then we end up, I end up bet checking a lot, uh, but going check, call, check, call seems kinda gross. So I don't, I mean, I don't wanna check, call, check, call, check, call, check fold sucks. I mean, I guess we could check, call and then check fold, but check, call, check, call, so our options here are to bet, get value, get him to fold some things as well. Uh, they have equity versus us and get value versus some of his range where the opposite is us checking. Him betting, turning some hands into a bluff and getting max value versus that with his value hands, I don't like that, I'm just gonna bet.
Uh, I would bet too, um, even with ten of hearts, just because I don't think he's got any king X, I think we still get value from nine X under pairs and then like wheel draws. With the over, ace five, ace four.
Twelve hundred, huh? I think twelve hundred might be too small.
I agree, too small, we're giving a good price.
Yeah, we're giving a good price to his entire ring, I mean, I don't know, if he has a flush draw, he's playing perfectly by calling. No, he's just gonna play perfectly right there, so. Yep, two K, let's do it.
Interesting, uh, spot here, I like check the best for a couple of reasons, one, it's a tighter play that called us. And combination of him being a tighter player, plus we bet six, like. With tens here, we bet like fairly large, like sixty percent of the pot into two six players or five other players, so I think his calling range should be condensed to like. Ace four, ace five suited, pocket fours through eights. Um, occasionally he could have jacks and queens and then he's gonna have a lot of nine X and a lot of heart draws. The king really doesn't improve any of those hands, but if we bet now, I think if we bet, we fold out hands like fours through eights and we isolate him to like his. Stronger nines and like king high flush, like king of hearts, X and like flush draws, I think I wanna check. I'm not as concerned, I think, about giving a free card to his heart draws and like, he could still have a hand like deuces, threes or nines that he called. I just think if we bet here, we isolate ourselves against the stronger parts of his range and I'd rather be pretty polar on this king turn. And be betting big or checking and this hand really doesn't fit into that range, so. We checked. He bet seventeen hundred. Should we fold, call, re-race to fifty-one hundred or re-race to sixty-five hundred?
I mean, interesting, uh, the difference in, in opinion here is that.
Alright, I'm back.
And I both thought that those hands would call, uh, a bet versus, uh, versus lead out here. And he's tighter, right? So if he's got tens, beat you with three bet as pre with jacks plus, certainly queens plus, ace, king. So I still kinda like betting, but seven out of ten, it's close, it is close, and I understand.
I really like betting, I really like still betting the turn, I get it, cause we bet in the six players. Yeah, I think it's probably close between the two, but, I mean, when we do decide, we're just gonna really check fold to this, hell no, right?
Everyone's calling, we can just call this and then.
Oh, we could just call this, I mean, no, we can't.
Yeah, we can't.
Okay, let's call.
Kind of an interesting spot between folding call, but I think our hand is just too strong, he could be like protection betting a hand like ace nine or ten nine or jack nine. He'd be betting with a six, five suited, some heart draws, but he's gonna have some possibly king, queen of spades, more likely like king, queen of hearts, king, jack of hearts. Maybe ace, king of hearts, if he doesn't three bet, I'm assuming he's on the tighter side, but nevertheless, he only bet a little over half pot. Or a little under half pot and tens are just too strong and we beat some of his value range, so I think we have a pretty standard call and. We should never ever raise a hand like tens here on the turn. We call, rivers the deuce of spades, nothing to talk about here, whenever there's a book like this, we're just always gonna check to the aggressor. Deuce certainly doesn't change anything. Should we? The during, turn comes the deuce of spades, should we check, bet fifteen hundred, bet twenty-five hundred or bet four thousand?
That's funny, I thought he was gonna ask us the question, I think he messed up his, his video. I think he messed up the edit. He was gonna cut this out, I think, and say there was no question what we were doing.
Alright.
I think he messed up his video, I think he was gonna edit it out.
Oh, so I was like, wait a minute, why?
He's like, there's no question, we're always gonna, and then there was a long pause and then he went back to two on the river, I think it was, it was bad editing.
I've done it because I've edited these things and it's not easy sometimes, that's funny as hell.
All day, so I'm, I'm a little more versed, but yeah, that's funny as hell, um, so in this spot, we just check the aggressor, right, we can't.
I mean, yeah, like, with these options, we're not gonna lead into them, so on the turn, we call the king and now. Yeah, we just check and then make a decision from here, like fifteen hundred blocking bet, no, no, no.
Wisco says, if we bet turn, that would have been a triple barrel river, uh, I would say no, I would check call on the river. Um, because when we triple, now the nine folds, eight, sevens fold, like what's calling?
Oh, toe, we just talked about this on Thursday, we talked about this, what you're talking, you know, you have zero block backs in your game really. And you need some, I think it would have been a decent spot if we did better, just a small bet on the river. I mean, I'm just saying, maybe not all, but yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's an option, at least in some cases. Um, but here, we just check, I mean, is anybody fifteen, is anybody lead, lead to induce? Damn cats are getting nasty in here, post, postal feeler bet, the postal feeler bet. Oh shit, that cat was so nasty. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm just chat calling at this point, we need let half pot on a turn, so I don't see what these other options accomplish. And I'm dying, the postal feeler bet.
You gotta look down and do that CTO.
Very standard check here in, in general, when you check call in the turn or the river, doesn't change anything and it's a, a brick. Then you always wanna just check to the aggressor, so the deuce certainly doesn't change anything. It's not like it's a heart or a ten or a jack or a queen that brings some straight draws or some flush draws completing, so checking for sure. Against really weak opponents, maybe you could bet like fifteen hundred here as a blocker bet to prevent him from betting bigger. Um, with his king X hands and, uh, with some other hands that make us, could possibly make us fold the best hand, so. But checking's the standard here, we check and he bets thirty-two hundred, should we fold, call, raise to nine thousand or go all in?
We already said, we're just calling.
Well, I can see.
We already talked about check out.
I mean, these two options just don't exist, raise to nine and go all in are pointless, um, in my opinion, so it's color fold, boys. Nine thousand, lol, you'd be getting nasty as shit if you made it nine thousand, but he's kinda.
But you're too attentive to a bluff at that point.
Yeah, we just turned tens into a bluff.
Yeah, you're getting, what, jacks to bolt?
I mean, look at our price here, uh, like, he's just gotta have a nine or a flush draw, ah, we, did, did, I always get a little concerned in these spots. Where I would just assume these random type villains are going to, if they are gonna bluff, they're gonna go larger, like this bet looks. Value as shit, the question is, is he value owning himself by betting a nine here or is he just always have a king? Less likely he has deuces, um, of course he could still have nines or threes, if he did have missed flush draws, I would expect. A bigger polarizing bet, um, so, yeah, I mean, we're still getting like three to one or something, so.
Yeah, we can't.
I mean, uh, yeah, yeah, I don't think we can get in this price, it just sucks.
Saying he's got king, ace, king of hearts, king, queen of hearts, and then he's got those in spades as well, and that's it, so, it's just a call.
I think tighter players tend to bet smaller with range, but this smaller, I just think people are gonna bluff bigger here, I wish I was good enough to fold here. But I'm not, I'm calling.
Oh, damn.
I wish I could fold here, but, cause this guy's just like, it, I tell my, this happens to me when I'm playing as well, like. This is a valuey looking size, like, it's not like, it's not like he's, is he really, why wouldn't he check back a nine X or underpair? Why wouldn't he bomb the fuck out of it with hearts on this river if he's going for a bluff? I just don't get it.
Bombs it, what's he trying to get to fold, really, like?
This, that nine.
And then a nine, like a nine's never folding.
A nine, I would say, I, I would say a nine would fold some, some frequency for sure, if we bomb it, I mean, we have king X, we have, I don't know. I don't know, I don't, I'm calling, I mean, I'm not folding, uh, obviously, but it, everybody's calling, we got, we got Salt Zombie folds, Drew folds. Well, it's not, I think it's a different Drew, not Drew one, not the one you played last night. What's up Bennett? I think tighter players tend to bet smaller with range, yeah.
We're just playing range versus range here, it's a math situation for me, it's just a call.
I mean, yeah, we're just gonna call and if he says fucking fold here, I, I, I'm sorry.
I'll yell him when I see him in and out.
Haha, alright, let's do it. Yeah, I knew it, guys, I promise I knew it.
In game, I struggled with this decision, uh, this is a pretty tough spot, cause he only bet like forty-five percent of the pot. In theory, two tens here is a clear call, it's way too strong of a hand to fold to a forty-five percent pop bet. But we are. Without a ton of read, it's hard to know if this guy's gonna bet any value hands for worse, is he gonna bet ace nine or ten nine or jack nine? Suited or nine, eight suited, I don't think so, once we check call the turn, I didn't, I assumed he wasn't betting a nine and if he doesn't bet a nine, we are bluff catching. And I'm just gonna assume a tighter player is not bluffing enough for our hand to be a bluff catcher here. My guess would be, he has like king, jack of hearts would be my best guess, that would be my best guess of what type of hand he has, so I made a tight fold here. Um, I don't blame calling, cause it is a correct call in theory, this is an exploitive adjustment, but, um. Tough spot and I think these are the type of spots in tournaments you need to find some folds and conserve your chips.
I one hundred percent agree. I would hope, boys, it's not about the bricky river, it's about like, his action here is being the tight player, he's gonna have fuck, fucking. I don't know, he's just gonna have fucking hands to beat you here a lot, boys.
Sometimes he's gonna have some bluffs and he's gonna have some value town himself spots, but like you said, like theoretically, it's a snap. He made an adjustment here, you know, and that's okay.
Why check call the turn if you're gonna fold one of the best rivers in the deck? Um, yeah, that, that's, that's a reason why I would find a call there, a shrug call all the time. Still gonna be super deep if we call, but it just feels like he's just got a value hand, um. I guess one of the worst value hands I would expect him to show up with here on the river is like ace nine would be one of the worst, that would bet for value. Otherwise, he's, he's just like gonna be, have a more polarized sizing with his bluffs and he just does have enough king X to get there. Six ways when he calls, we bet into, I don't know, man, everything about the story feels like we're beat, so, I don't know.
Alright, guys, that's it, I gotta go, um, thank you for hanging out, exclamation point PC in my chat, exclamation point PC in six's. Chat for links to sign up for at least free, um, where you get a bunch of free content there as well, plus over six hundred and fifty of these. Comers, push sharks, all these things available for premium members as well, um, the live game is today, um, I will do some like vloggy stuff for it. But, uh, I don't think it's gonna be for PC dot com that I know of yet, J L, hit me up, um. So that's it for that, what I'm gonna do, cause I gotta go, is I'm gonna throw the host over to sixes, he can wrap this up, do a giveaway and throw a host, um, go watch his basketball game.
Hey, good luck, buddy, um, good luck today, man, you're, you know you got it, I believe in you, but, um, yeah, man, do your thing, buddy, good luck, man.
Uh, thanks for hanging out, we'll put the replay up on YouTube as well and that's all I got for you, peace.
Nah, he meant the Ohio State game.
See you later, man.
See you, buddy, have a good one.